Live motion to open the meeting. So, second.
Second.
All those in favor Laurel.
Yes.
Lindsay is not underlined. Jay is not underlined. Jan.
Yes.
Nancy's not underlined. Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bob? So we begin.
Okay.
Our first order of business as we go over the minutes for last minute meeting. Anyone have any questions? And it was approval to accept.
To get to the two, yeah.
None in dusted.
Okay.
Laurel introduce our guests.
Okay, so we have Brian Jamros and Kathleen Blowacki, or is it Lowiki, Blowacki? From Bartholomew here today, welcome. Um, can you hear us?
We can. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear us?
Kathleen, can Kathleen, I can't hear Kathleen.
You hear me? Yes.
Oh, now we can. Okay. There we go.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Happy November. Hard to believe that Thanksgiving is uh two weeks away tomorrow uh from tomorrow. I did check the calendar. That is right. I don't know how that's possible. Um, and I don't want to get political on you because you don't pay us to do, but I think we can, no matter what side you're on, I think we can both agree or all agree. That I'm glad this thing's over, so we don't have to listen to more ads. I don't even care what side you're on. It just, I'm done.
We can, we can watch more television.
Yes.
Okay, well Shark Tank it is for our family. They love Shark Tank. Well, thank you. Uh, we have a lot to go over. Um, so we're gonna start, uh, so I'm Brian Jamros. I'm um part of the investment advisory team outside client facing and Kathleen now has been. Uh, as of February, we met her before. Uh, she's a hundred percent on the client facing uh advisory team as well. Um, so. I thought we would uh, we'd start with a presentation of the review through ten thirty-one. And then we could go into a couple of housekeeping items. I've heard that your town has moved to go to prudent investor. We can talk about how that will impact your account and what we can do. To make some changes to target some better returns and reappropriate and invest like a prudent investor would, okay?
Yep.
And we'll leave out Bitcoin and penny stock, of course. You want to do that personally, you're more than welcome to, but uh, the government frowns upon that right now, so, okay? Okay, uh, let me share my screen. That probably helps. Share. Screen number two. Okay, and if you could do me a favor, just give me the thumbs up if you can see it, okay, or if you need me to make it bigger.
Can't see it at all.
It hasn't appeared.
Oh, hold on, let's try that again. I guess it probably, let's see, come on. I guess it helps if you press that blue button down below that says share, right? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, thumbs up.
Thumbs up, and it says Langley Adams Public Library Trust Fund, correct?
Yep, yes.
Excellent. Is it, can you see it in terms of the uh size?
No.
A little bigger would be nice.
Okay, we'll work on that.
I'm trying to, do I do that?
Okay, that's his, okay, there we go. How's that?
That's good.
Okay, that's about all I can do. Otherwise, get your glasses. Sorry. Okay, here we go. Um, so Langley Public Adams Library, a hundred thirty-five thousand uh. Three dollars and five cents as of ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. We always like to give the last full month on record. Uh, the last uh October was kind of a down market. Uh, November back up. Uh, Kathleen can pull up the balance if you don't mind while I go through this and then I'll really utilize you for the uh prudent investor. So looking at this portfolio, you have a uh, a portfolio of twenty-two. It's probably at a twenty percent target for the legalist equities. Um, it's a little overweight because of the uh, just a little bit slightly overweight, which is fine. And the rest is in fixed income. So this is a twenty eighty mandate. Um, as you can see here, the current yield as of ten thirty-one was three one two. I want those to remember that it's not just about the current yield in this portfolio. What's that? What was that? I'm sorry.
Bottom of the screen, the report.
It's okay.
That's it, okay.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay, sorry. Yes, please speak up. I apologize. Can you hear me okay too?
And I did send this to you, so somebody, yeah.
Excuse me. So I apologize in advance. I have allergies and they just seem to be ragging my voice here today, so. The current yield on this portfolio is three point one two, but that's not your total return. Uh, that's just giving you some of the income. It doesn't have necessarily. Uh, the appreciation on the common stock. We'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, let's see. Okay, here we go. Uh, so if you split this portfolio right down in the middle. Take a look here. You'll see here that um, th- this is as of seven one twenty twenty-four through ten thirty-one twenty twenty-four, so four months of activity. You've had an increase of two point four three percent. That is not an annualized return. That is an increase for just the four months. Uh, the total gain after fee of that is three thousand two oh two ninety. Um, the ending balance for ten thirty-one is a hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven thirty-four. And you can see the unrealized gains, interest, dividend, cap gains and management fees all listed out. On the left-hand side, you can see since inception. Um, so we started out this portfolio in eight twenty-two, two thousand seventeen. It had a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, started with a hundred and twenty-five thousand, thirty-four dollars and two cents. You had nine thousand dollars in withdrawals over the years. And the ending balance as of ten thirty-one was one hundred and thirty-five thousand. What you're gonna see here with the twenty eighty portfolio, you've been limited in your, under the legalists, really have been limited in what you can earn. Uh, because of the portfolio. Number one, it's legalist. Number two, it was uh conservative with twenty percent equity. We're gonna talk at the end of this, some of the things we can do to. Check, make some changes and recommendations to target a higher rate of return now that the legalist. Ha, ha, you have the option of going prudent investor, which that just changed laws in the Mass General laws back in August of two thousand twenty-three. So it's nothing you really could have done prior to this. Um, and uh, so because the laws would not allow that, okay? So uh, on the bottom side here, you have the brown line that represents how much you put in or taken out. And the blue line represents the market value. Okay, Kathleen, I'm gonna turn it over to you because my voice is uh, just give me a hard time. Sorry about that.
Sure, um. So on this page, we have, um, so in this portfolio, because of the size of the portfolio, and this is where um prudent will be a real benefit. Um, to this portfolio, but for the reason of this size, we have um, a couple of individual bonds and then we use some ETFs. And so I say that because this page is just looking at um, the individual bonds, but it gives you a good idea. Of the true return of the bonds, which is on that right-hand side, the top line that Brian is highlighting. Uh, the yield to maturity. Of the bonds that you own is four point nine three um percent, which has been great. You know, interest rates rose really aggressively. Um, and they were high for quite some time. They've started to come down, but where we've been able to, you know, we've kind of um. Tried to take advantage of those higher rates, and so that's um, you know, around five percent is kind of where that sits. Um, and on the next page, um, th- this is a lot of detail, what we'll say at least. Um, under the S and P ratings on the bottom left part of this page, um, as it pertains to the legalist. You know, we can only buy um above investment grade types of um, um bonds, and so that's there sometimes for auditors, you know, well to see that, but again, going prudent. Um, we can talk about some of the changes, but a lot of, you know, some of the detail there, but here, this page, page six, I think is the most. Helpful um, when it comes to thinking about this portfolio and kind of how it maybe could have been um. Uh, invested um, under the legalist. It's just some kind of reference point. So this portfolio is that top line. So you can see all of the trailing performance there, um, one year, three year, five year, and since inception. Um, and then the line below is what's really interesting. So if you had just owned bonds. Um, over this extended period of time, so no equities, um, that's what your return would have looked like. And so you can see, you know, since inception, even though you've just had, like we said, a kind of a small um allocation to the legalist stocks. It's really helped you year over year instead of making, you know, around one point seven six percent, you've made over two percent. Um, which is again, within the restrictive nature of the legalist, um, that's really helped the, the portfolio. And then we show CPI there as your inflation, of course, has been really skewed to the high side um, as of late. And then that last um bottom line is kind of your money market um proxy, so. You know, l- like we said, interest rates are really high right now, and so uh money markets have been quite good, but in the long term, it's of course better. To be invested, so just some kind of context um points there. And then this page really, it's a lot of numbers, I know, but the most important line is the top line. Uh, what we're really trying to show, that shows that point of me saying even a small allocation to equities has really helped. Here you can see that. Since inception, the stocks that you've owned have added um, just under, you know, call it eight percent um year over year, and so that you can see. Um, kind of stripped out there as well. And on the one-year basis like Brian is highlighting, obviously the market has done really, really well, and so having even just a little bit of that has um helped. And if we talk about prudent, you know, maybe adding more into equities over the long term, um, you know, could benefit the portfolio as well, but we can, we'll touch on that. Um, here, calendar year by calendar year returns. Um, I won't go into too much detail besides, of course, twenty twenty-two, as we know. Was a really difficult year, and it's interesting, at that time, we were talking about recession and, you know, what, a lot of uncertainty and volatility. Um, in the world, but twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four so far, um, twenty twenty-four in fact has been the best performance. Um, in this account, going back to twenty seventeen, um, you know, the market's been really quite strong. The Federal Reserve feels good about where we are. Um, your, I just looked as well for November. This portfolio is up another half of a percent. So that's kind of what legalists, you sort of expect, slow and steady. Um, so November's been, you know, positive as well, just for some. Some color there, but the market's been great, which is nice. Um, and then here, this, everything else in this um. Presentation is just all of the holdings, and so here, the common stock, these are the only equities. Um, we can buy at this point, and so you'll notice there are a lot of names you'll recognize, probably recognize, you know, uh, most of them, if not all of them. Um, dividend paying stocks, you're not gonna see um, a lot of technology here. You're gonna see more like healthcare companies, utilities. Um, companies that have just been around forever. Doesn't mean they're bad, just means um, there's some concentration here, you know, we only have, I think, twenty-two stocks to choose from, so. That's what the legalist is at this point, and then you have everything else, all of the bonds, um, bond funds. And then on the next page, those few bonds that we, we can buy, and I think it's important to point out, maybe transitioning into the prudent. Um, message as well, we're also restricted on the bonds we can buy. Um, so we have some clients, let's say in Maine, for example, who don't have. This law, we can buy like a Microsoft bond, for example, in the legalist. Um, we're restricted to what corporate bonds we can buy and what agencies, um, what treasuries, what CDs. Um, so here's, you know, an example of kind of some of the, the types of things we, we can buy, but I'll pause there. I don't wanna um, take up too much time, but that's a high level of the account as it stands at this point.
Any questions with any of that?
So the good news is, um, you have a lo- uh, you know, we don't, with a hundred and. Let's just see.
Thirty-five.
Hundred and thirty-five thousand, three dollars and five cents. It's very difficult to navigate through a legalist portfolio. Um, we've been able to do it, don't get me wrong, but you're just, you've been restricted in many ways. Um, now that you can pr- go to prudent investor, uh, the, you know, you can take a, a forty thousand dollar account, have it by itself and have. Best execution and liquidity, whereas um, in a legalist portfolio, it was, it was much harder to do so. So let's transition to prudent. Um, does anybody have, I mean, does anybody have any questions in reference to prudent? Um, in terms of, you know, where we'd like to go, we can now invest these under prudent investor, which opens the world up. Uh, we would be investing in uh mutual funds. Uh, a more diversified portfolio and um. Let me open it up to any questions, and I apologize, I had to run home. Uh, so if there's barking kids or uh talking dogs, that's uh, that's the background, so I apologize. Um, but is there any questions on prudent investor, or do you just want us to dig into it and with some recommendations?
I personally would, you're the ones, this is your job, so you would know better than us. I mean, that's why we have you.
Yeah, but, but the top side, do you lean more towards a mutual fund or individual stocks with this approach, or both?
Yeah, good question. Uh, Kathleen, you can answer.
Yeah, yeah, typically um mutual funds. That's especially just for the diversification um aspect of it. And so we, just for a little bit of background, I don't have to get too into the weeds, but um, we have an investment team. There's five of them plus an investment committee, which includes myself and a, another um, big group of us. That are really doing research on what types of funds we should own in, in these types of accounts, so really just for again. The, you know, concentration risk and wanting the diversification. We usually go toward mutual funds or ETFs, depends on the um space.
Any other questions on that side? Okay, so a couple of things. Um, I did talk to your town treasurer uh on a different matter, and she let me know that there's some changes going on between the relationship between. Uh, the town and the library. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, couple of things, there's some new monies coming into the account as well. Uh, congratulations. I heard there's some. Uh, let's see, let me get the exacts. There's some transfers coming in. I don't have those at my fingertips, but there's some recent donations, correct?
Yeah. So. Okay, so one of the things is we have closed a Vanguard account. And that money is going back, so we took out, originally we took out six thousand dollars from six. Of the trust funds that we were allowed to do and invested that into Vanguard. They have increased so that. Um, that money has increased to twenty-five thousand, seventy-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. Can't be right. Six, six accounts, a thousand dollars each. I'm sorry.
So six accounts, a thousand dollars each.
Yeah, it has increased to that, so we have closed the Vanguard account. That amount of money, you will be seeing the, the forms are there. We just have to have the approval. Um, and then we also had a bank account that you would, whenever we needed to have money, you would take the money. We had that conversation, Brian. That you didn't, we don't necessarily need. A checking account to depo- uh, you know, our own checking account to deposit it, so. We closed the checking account. That money was also, at the time, we needed to have. Um, all seventeen trust accounts, trust fund accounts. Put into a checking account. We put fifty dollars in each one.
Oh, okay.
We've closed that, and you should be receiving one thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. That would be distributed in each one of those. Seventeen accounts that we have. Does that make sense?
Just give me the breakdown or we can.
And, and that form will be, i- it's there. I, I filled out the form that you have sent.
Perfect.
Yes, and so that's set. Um, it has been given to the town accountant. And it will be gone through that way from now on through warrants. And so yes, that money has not landed on your desk yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a larger one? My understanding, there was a, a library repair of like five hundred thousand. Is that accurate?
Well, yes and no, but that's not coming to us.
Okay.
No, and that, yeah, that, we will be discussing that at the treasurer's report. Almost five hundred thousand, but it's not to us, it's to the town.
Okay, okay.
For use of the library, so we can't, we don't, we can't invest that.
That's fine.
Right, wouldn't yet, but.
Okay, that's fine, and my understanding it is for the repair of the.
Repair and upkeep of the library.
Right, and we'll be discussing that, so it's no, yeah.
My only reason for asking that question is that would significantly impacted the uh, because of the understanding that it was.
Unfortunately, you're only getting about uh twenty-six thousand something back.
Oh hey, that's good, that's great.
And to be distributed among, yeah. So it'll be our, the portfolio has just increased twenty-six something, twenty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, excellent, and then what are you doing for a checking account, just briefly?
Going through the town's checking account, because we need a separate ID. It, it, yeah, it, it didn't, it didn't work out. The town would not let us use their town ID, their.
Tax ID.
Tax ID.
Yep.
It just wasn't going to work out, and this way we have better checks and balances. We're going to do it through a warrant um situation.
Sure, yep.
And it's just everybody, because the town needs to have a checks and balances anyway on all of this money. You send the report to them, right?
But it's still under trustees' control as far as import and output dispersals.
Yes, but it's near the venue. There's a checking account. How's that sound? Yeah.
Okay, no, and we're very familiar that with that. We deal with three hundred and thirty.
And, and it, it was, it was, it's a law. Apparently it's a Massachusetts law, so, yeah.
Who's been on the board more than uh ten years? Is anybody?
I have.
Kathy, I have.
Okay.
Laurel Fukaski.
Okay, so um, I don't know quite when it happened, but um, many years ago, there was a, a, a discussion between the town and the library and. That can separated the, I'm not getting into the politics of it, I promise, but there was, there was a discussion between the ti- town and library. Um, and.
Different situation.
It's a different situation now, right? You have a much more open treasurer, uh.
Exactly.
Uh, super, I mean.
We have a town administrator now.
Yeah, your, your, your administrator changed, your powers to be changed. Um, so, okay, that's excellent. Okay, so I see where you're going. Um, I was just concerned about that five hundred thousand, because at the time when I talked to the treasurer, uh, she wasn't necessarily certain when that was gonna be paid out or whether that was gonna go. Okay, excellent.
Excuse me, Brian. It was approved by the Board of Selectmen last night to accept that. It's just under five hundred thousand. I think it's four hundred and ninety-seven thousand. I, we have our remainder trust from a former volunteer at the library and um. So that will go in the Bartholomew account according to the treasurer, Michelle Beegan, but it will be under the care, custody and control of the treasurer. So it won't be mixed with our trust funds. It will be a different account. And it's at the discretion of the treasurer, how it's spent for repairs and a maintenance of the library, however. However, it.
Or treasurer. Not the treasurer of the town.
The treasurer of the town, yeah, the treasurer of the town, Michelle Beegan, and hopefully we'll be. Communicating well about what our ideas are and what the town's ideas are.
Kathleen, it seems to be confusion. Which treasurer are you talking about?
I'm talking about Michelle Beeg and the town treasurer.
She doesn't make the decisions on how that money is spent for the library.
No, no, the five hundred thousand.
She does not make the decision for that. The board does. We request the money from.
How is it worded, Laurel?
Well, and I want to thank you, Brian, for taking my big surprise away.
Oh, I'm sorry. Laurel, I apologize. I didn't know that was a surprise.
Um, to whom it may concern, it's my pleasure to inform you that the town of Groveland is named as a beneficiary of Francis W. Sullivan's. Deceased charitable remainder trust. The value that would, will be sent to the town of Groveland upon receiving signed acceptance of the funds. Is approximately four hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred eighteen dollars. The designates, designated purpose of these funds as directed by the governing trust document is. Quote, "To be held in a separate account maintained by the town treasurer. For the specific purpose of the care and maintenance of the physical structure of the Langley Adams Library located in Groveland, Massachusetts. Or its lawful successor provided said beneficiary is a charitable organization." And then it says, "Please sign below," and that's where the um Board of Selectmen, or Select Board uh signs last night. And it's approximate because it is a fund that, you know, goes up and down, just like our Bartholomew, you know, these funds, so um. Yeah.
But it doesn't get mixed into these trust funds. It stays in the town's, right?
Right.
Perfect, and I'm sorry that I took your thunder away. I didn't know that was uh.
So I couldn't wait to explain, like, that's what we have, but that's okay.
So the, the importance to me is, it was, where was that money going? I didn't know that at the time.
Right.
Oh, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, yes. Yes, yeah.
Okay, so with that said, um. The, okay, so it's pretty straightforward. So we have additional twenty-six thousand funds going right here up on the, the page, if you can see it here. I have the last report, quarterly report, nine thirty, twenty twenty-four. Um, you folks haven't really used a lot of this money. I think nine thousand in the last, you know, since two thousand seventeen.
We will be this month.
Right, but how much? Uh, how much you looking at roughly?
Forty-six hundred, and then there's. Seventy-six hundred, and then there's thirty-two hundred. And so.
About fourteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
About fourteen thousand, I see.
Okay, and you have twenty-six thousand coming in, so.
Right.
Okay, so you have roughly about seventy thousand dollars in non expendable according to the nine thirty statement. And let's just see something thirty-five. So you have about a little over fifty-two, well, fifty-one, fifty, almost fifty-two percent of non expendable. Um, you know, our recommendation, these funds have kind of just been. Sitting idle for um, since two thousand seven. Uh, it's hard to, it was hard to put them to work based on. Uh, the mandate of the legalist. We can now go prudent. Uh, we can bump up, you know, our recommendation based on your cash flow and what you've used in the last. Several years unless you're dramatically gonna change any of it, but even, even so, you have fifty-two percent. Uh, non expendable to your expendable balance, not including the new money coming in. I don't have that breakdown. Um, you could easily ratchet up the equity exposure um. Into this, uh, I would recommend fifty, fifty, sixty, forty portfolio, so we can try to grow some of these funds. Now that we have the more diversification and um. Uh, we have, you know, we have liquidity and best execution with the mutual fund purchases. That would be our recommendation. Uh, Kathleen, did you want to add anything in that?
No, that, that's perfect, yep.
So Brian, I just did add up, um, you will be receiving twenty-six thousand, two hundred, one dollars and fourteen cents. To be distributed between six. Well.
And that will all go in the expendable fund, Laurel, right?
Right, right.
A hundred percent of that's expendable? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let me just see something. And then you're taking away, what'd you say, fourteen thousand?
Probably sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yeah.
I mean.
Uh, roughly, roughly.
Yeah, round it out to fifteen, I guess.
Okay, fifteen thousand, okay. Okay, fifteen thousand, okay.
Which, I mean, we could have done it that, the other way, just sent it, but we want it this way.
No, hey, this. I'm dealing with exact personalities. You want accountants and treasurers and then airline pilots to have exact personalities. Don't want them saying, wow, we're almost there. Oh, no, whoops, we've hit that a little farther than we thought. Sorry. A little faster than we thought, right? Okay. Seventy thousand. Just give me one moment. I'm just doing a quick calculation here. So you're still at forty eight percent, uh, forty eight percent not expendable after those transfers, so. Uh, I don't know, um, if you, I feel pretty comfortable with a fifty fifty portfolio, sixty forty. Uh, how, how do you folks feel? You've been ultra conservative since two thousand seventeen. Um, and I'm not saying we're going crazy here, um, but that would be.
Five years ago, we had gone fifty fifty.
What's that?
I wish five years ago we had gone fifty fifty.
Yeah, I do too, but however, your board in the past has been very conservative and, um, I think, you know, they wanted to walk before they ran. Um, and I just want you to remember, you know, when is the timing of the market? When's the best time to put this in? You know, I struggle with this every day. Um, and I've heard this phrase, and I wish I knew this in my twenties, looking back. It's not necessarily timing in the market or timing, I'm sorry. It's not timing the market, you know, the markets are high, um. And they've been high for the last, since two thousand sixteen. I mean, we've, two thousand twenty two had its downs, don't get me wrong, in two thousand eighteen. The last fourth quarter of the calendar was down as well. Um, but it's time in the market that is the key of successful investors. Um, seventy, you know, seventy thousand or close to forty eight percent can never be touched. Because of the trust funds have that non expendable amount that was told to you by those gracious people that donated money to you. Um. So I don't know. I mean, at the end of the day, it's the board's decision, but, you know, I would easily recommend fifty fifty, sixty forty. Um, with the portfolio. Now, you know what Murphy's Law is. As soon as you do it, the markets are going to go down. However, don't be concerned about that because. It's the future growth of it over time. These monies are not like you and I. Unfortunately, I will die at some point and my money. Will turn over to my heirs, which is great, but, um, these monies will never turn over. Uh, these will be in perpetuity forever, so, um, you know. I'll open up discussion. Kathleen, did you have anything to add?
No, I think someone had a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just, I wonder, for the non expendable, would it be possible to go sixty or even higher? And for the expendable to drop it down to forty, would that be a little more? Uh. In line with a conservative view?
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. So you, what we would do is, um, I hear your point, and that's what we're doing in the calculation.
Right.
Um, we're taking it as a whole, um, and making that calculation, looking at the non expendable expendable. Um, if you don't like the sixty forty, I would just split in the middle and go fifty fifty.
Yeah.
Um, you can start, you know, you can always, you know, you can always start at forty sixty and then change it in six months, however. I mean, it's up to you. I mean, the bottom line is, we get paid the same whether you're twenty eighty, fifty fifty, so I don't have any, like. There's no hidden agenda on my behalf. I'm just trying to do what's best for the, 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 what you have in the account, okay? Um, so please don't think, I've had people ask me, are you, you promote?
We talked about the possibility of splitting our account in two. Basically, those that are non restrictive and those that are, we can only use the interest. Uh, and at the time, the discussion was, you know, why are we buying bonds for, uh, for a portfolio? Suit of their equities and vice versa. I don't know if that makes sense. I think it's almost piggybacks for Kathy sending. We'll do a probation forty, fifty, sixty, forty, whatever, based on, you know, whether it's, uh, non restrictive or interest.
Kathleen, I couldn't quite hear everything on that. Could you respond, please? Sorry.
Uh, I'm not sure either. Are we saying we would split the account into two? Is that what?
No, we treated it as if it was two, not split it.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So that, uh, you wouldn't buy a high yield bond necessarily for an equity. But you would buy it for, um, uh, an interest bearing, uh, portfolio.
Right, yeah, so we would manage this more for, I guess you could say, growth and income, so more just balance, really. Uh, because you're balancing, like Brian said, those two things of, of wanting to protect, you know, let's call it. You want to protect the whole thing, but protect part of the portfolio and grow, um. To the benefit of the whole portfolio, so, um. Yeah, so we would balance that, if that makes.
Okay, so if we go sixty forty, it would apply to everything.
Yes, yep.
Let's move ahead. I'd like to make a motion that we do this at fifty fifty, as recommended by Brian.
A second.
All those in favor? Laurel?
Yes.
Lindsay? Okay, Jay? Jan?
Yeah.
Nancy, Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
I'm staying.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Best. All right.
Excellent.
We'll be making more money, right, Brian?
Well, we're going to target more money. Remember, it's time in the market, not timing the market, correct?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I have a question. Is there anything, we did vote to go ahead with the, um, prudent investment. Is there anything you need from us, like paper signed or anything like that? This, this is our agreement then?
Yeah, there's nothing for us.
Okay.
Uh, you just need to, you know.
We'll provide, I'll, I'll just say we'll provide, um, an investment policy. So, um, a draft investment policy that has the parameters of fifty fifty and just some language in there if you want to. Look at it, sign it, and then that kind of becomes your, your, um, your document.
Okay.
But as far as confirmation for going prudent, um, as long as somebody fact check it, fact checked it to make sure it passed the town meeting. We don't, we won't police that for you, okay?
Great.
Thank you.
We trust you.
And then Laurel, you'll send him the paperwork from Michelle that determines how much goes into each of those six accounts, right?
Michelle sends it.
Oh, Michelle will send, okay, great.
I have a copy of it, but Michelle sends it. Yes.
So just for housekeeping, um, for some of the thing, if I could, Laurel. The, so there's no more, there's no additional accounts that you have for your operating, so everything's being run through the treasurer's office.
Correct.
Okay, that helps because when they draft money in or push money out, it's, it's, everything's going through the warrant process, basically.
Right, yes.
Okay, excellent.
So we have, uh, everyone here has the opportunity to sign every warrant so they can see what's happening. It, we get reports back from the town. It's, it's just total bookkeeping. Wonderful news.
Well, can I ask you a question? Are you going to get your name off of this account as well on top of that? Are you going to remove your name?
No, no, we, we still will need a treasurer because the treasurer is the person who fills out the paperwork. So Darcy will do the warrant, but I fill out the paperwork with the town accountant. And then she sends it, I mean, I can send it through her, but she sends it, says, put this money in, take this money out, whatever. Through a warrant process, but it's still, we have to vote on it, we still, yes, and I am the, uh. The person that represents the board in this matter, rather than going over to the office.
Yeah, I mean, Laurel, you're the one who decides according to the. Parameters of the trust.
Right, also the trust funds.
Out of to pay the bills, right?
Right, so for instance, this money that we will be taking out. I will be looking at all the trust funds and decide what percentage to take out of what. Which one, or do we take a hundred percent out of one, or, you know, whatever. Typically, what has happened in the past is the percentage of the ones that can be used for furniture. You know, some say only books, so we can't use, we can't touch those, so. I'm the one that decides where, you know, I tell Shell, take so much out of this, so much out of that. To pay for these invoices. Does that make sense? And, oh, the good news is, I don't have to be bonded anymore, and we got the reimbursement from the bonding company. And it's back in the state, uh, the state aid account. I asked, I went and asked, I mean, it's only a hundred and sixty two dollars, but it's a hundred and sixty two dollars, and if you don't ask, you're not going to get it. Eh, exactly, so that's another good thing. I don't have to be bonded because they're bonded. So.
Okay, excellent. So that helps me with some housekeeping items when we transfer back and forth. I may have to ask my ops people, it's a little unique. Because, uh, Michelle's not on your assigned account, but yet. There may be, we may, I have to figure that out. She's not on your accounts.
But she, how does she get the reports then?
Oh, we just, you've given us permission to give us, you've given us permission where you've had them, um, together. I'm sorry, separate. You've given permission and signed authorization, or your predecessor has signed authorization to allow us to give her a duplicate statement.
Right.
Uh, it's just fundamentals. We'll, we'll figure this out. I'll call you.
Well, I mean, we could just add, no problem, and, yeah.
Okay, you would be okay with that, adding her as a signator?
Right.
Okay, that would solve the problem, I think. Because I was concerned with the drafting of the money back and forth from a mechanical standpoint, housekeeping, okay?
Okay, yep.
I'll ask our internal people, uh, on that, and I'll get you, let you know. What I would recommend, uh, is, you know. When you're taking out that fourteen thousand, I would do it the same time you do the, uh, the twenty six thousand add in. Do it at the same exact, exact time on the transfer sheet. That way, there's less transactions at the same time, okay?
Ah, okay, I will have to get in touch with her.
And then, um.
I thought she maybe had sent him already to you.
Um, I think we needed to meet first, uh, here. She did send them to me, but we needed to meet first to figure out. What your intentions were. Are you okay with her being on as a signer on the account? Because there is that little, I needed to understand the logistics of what was going on from your side.
Right.
Because there is some logistics that, if she's not on the account, I don't know how we could do that. I had to think that, like, we had to work through that operationally. That's why I'm asking.
Okay, so. We'll resubmit that with the money coming out too.
Yeah, we'll, 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 I'll, I'll follow up.
I'll, I'll work with Michelle tomorrow.
Perfect, perfect. And, um, let's see, do you have anything else for us?
I, I have a follow up question.
Sure, go ahead.
And in our last meeting, you had mentioned that there, there was a change in interpretation. Uh, as to what constitute interest, and you had indicated that appreciation would be deemed. Is that? My proper representation of that?
Was that me or my colleague Chuck Patterson?
I think the same.
So there is, um, let's see, there is something out there, um. So the net earnings, uh, well, actually, let me ask you what's in reference to, the, on the trust. The trust, can you spend the net earnings?
Well, for an account where we can only use the interest, you know, some of those accounts, uh, we started at a hundred dollars, now they're two hundred dollars. Can we access the hundred dollars in appreciation?
So it would be through the, uh, I'll look, I'll dig up that law, um, that I ran into. I did run into it, so I didn't know if Chuck. I was just trying to figure out who did it, who told you about it.
More of a, a clarification and if it's true, should we take advantage of it?
So you, yeah, I'll dig that up. Um, and I believe that is, so basically, it says you can take the net earnings out. Uh, the net earnings is part of, goes part of into your ending or, uh, I'm sorry, into your ending earnings, which you can spend that ending earnings portion. Um, however, you do have to fall back on the trust documents to make sure there's no. Uh, ramifications or spending guidelines or limitations, I should say. I can pull that out for you. Let me just write that down. Uh, I ran across that with one town. Uh, where was some, let me just, uh, let me just write this down. Uh, oh, gosh, uh, just trying to think of the town right now. Update, oh, I know, okay, thank you. Uh, town, sounds, uh, spending. Uh, earnings. So one of the things that we should talk about is, you know, how do you spend earnings? Obviously, you can't go below the non expendable amount, um, and one thing. Um, what you can do is you can spell, should we talk about the twenty trailing quarters? What is Kathleen? Should I go there?
Yes, if, yeah, I mean, you can, if it's relevant to truly being able to spend both.
Yeah, you can spend both. So there is, uh, there is a court case out there that did allow, and I got it through attorney, I would, you know, obviously. Um, one, two attorneys in town, uh, one attorney in town, no work, two attorneys in town, plenty of work. So that's what my attorney friend told me, at least. The, I got it from attorney, uh, I, I'll look through it, I'll get it to you, and it basically said you could spend the net earnings. In the market value, but you can never, you know, you can't go below the non expendable amount, so you do have to be mindful. There's like a. There's a balancing act there. Um, you just can't touch the non expendables, which are all low. Um, but the twenty trailing quarters, how do you spend these? To continue to have appreciation for these, because, you know, when Anne Balch, and if I'm saying that incorrectly, please forgive me. Donated her two thousand fifty dollars, uh, many years ago, is that worth the same? You know, how many years ago was that? If it was thirty years ago. Um, which I don't know. In front of me, but it's only worth, you know, what, fifty cents on the dollar now, right? Something like that. So you want to not just spend all of the expendable. In that column that I still, I still have it up there, in, in column for Anne. You don't want to spend that forty one ninety two seventy seven, because now, how is that two thousand dollars going to grow? And two thousand dollars thirty years ago is not worth the same as it is today. Does that make sense? So one of the things you can do and some of the best practices is you can take the market value. Over the last twenty trailing quarters, and you can do a drawdown of three to five percent. Um, and if you start doing that, you can do that. Um, and you can create a budget on spending this, these funds on a three to five percent. If you do that, we need to know that, because that would change our recommendation with the equity to bond exposure. Uh, because if you're drawing down five percent. Out of the twenty trailing quarters, we would re- recommend, uh, you know, a much larger. Uh, equity to fixed income exposure on that portfolio. Part of the reason why I recommended fifty fifty or sixty forty. Is because you haven't spent much money out of this in the last several years. So if that changes. In the way you're doing business, we need to know that, um, like, if you're going to start drawing down a lot more than you have been. Please let us know, because then our recommendation would be slightly different, and we can come in person and show you that, how that is. Um, or do it on Zoom, that's fine too. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yes, so at the present time, right now, we only have, we have a new treasurer, we have a new system, so we're just right now. Ex- expending money for new furniture to update the library. So I think going forward, if there's a plan to. Draw down more, then that's when we would ask you to come back and go over it.
If you're drawing down more on a regular basis, right? If you're going to start, um. Drawing this down on a regular basis and drawing out five percent on average, which is on the high level. Remember, if you're drawing down five percent, we're only targeting, uh, in a fifty fifty, we're targeting somewhere between five, five and a half percent return. Um, and a sixty forty, six percent return, okay? So if you're at a fifty fifty targeting, let's just say five for illustration purposes. On a ongoing, regular basis in today's interest rates. Um. Environment. Now, if interest rates go up, that changes, obviously.
Right.
Um, but. Just use that analogy. We're targeting a five percent return, five, five and a half percent return on an ongoing basis. Consistently, you know, some years are going to be ten, some years are going to be zero, but the average is, you know. Five, five and a half percent on a fifty fifty portfolio. So if you're drawing down five percent on annual basis, year after year after year, but you're only targeting five and a half. Well, you don't leave much room for inflation from an ongoing perspective. Does that make sense? So that, that's why we would want to bump up your equity exposure more, so we can, we can cover inflation and, uh, maybe one percent. We would put a one percent target for capital appreciation. We can cover inflation and uh maybe one percent. We would put a one percent target for capital appreciation. Or appreciation of the, the value of the fund. So in that case, if you're drawing down. Five, we probably wanna target an eight percent reg- or eight, nine percent return, which is a lot more uh aggressive than a fifty fifty portfolio. If you're uh drawing down three percent on a regular basis out of the uh ending market value. Um, you know, you probably wanna be targeting a rate of return of somewhere between. Uh, I'm sorry, your e- equity exposure of sixty forty to seventy thirty. You've been ultra conservative all these years, so I didn't wanna, you know, throw that at you at the gate. I wanted to work you up there. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I mean, I'll do whatever you wanna do at the end of the day, but I feel like you're going from twenty eighty legalist to. Uh, I didn't wanna have you jump off that, that high or that fast, if that's not what you've been comfortable with, okay?
Yep, yes.
Kathleen, anything to add on that?
No, no, that's, that's great.
Okay. Um, basically, just twenty trailing quarters is just an average over the last five years. That's all that is, okay? And we would provide that for you on a quarterly basis if you wanted to go that way. Once you set, folks settle in, we can come back out and talk about all this stuff.
Wow.
Um, and just to briefly talk before we wrap up, the transition for the, the legalist will happen over for the best interest of the. Of the account. The nice news, the good news is, um, this is a hundred percent inside the account. A hundred percent of this account will go to Pruden. So it's much easier. There's no new account that needs to take place. Um, and we can transition this and keep. Some of the best exposures until we feel our investment management team feels like there's a better opportunity. So we'll do this over. Although Kathleen, what do you think on this one? I mean, relatively soon or well?
Um, probably soon. And this one, just looking at what we just looked at with the equities and. Most of the um bonds being in ETFs, it'll probably be quicker.
Oh, right, right. That makes it much easier. Absolutely. Okay. So we'll do this in a short order. Um, next time we meet, we'll give you an update. And um, if you, you need it then beforehand, please let us know. Did we answer every question you needed? Anybody else?
And more. Thank you.
Sorry, there is a lot of detail on this. So we try to keep it high level, but then we, we have to dig into the detail.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You to come on Zoom. You didn't have to come out.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you so much.
Yes, thanks for coming. Bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
So you took all of my fire away from my heart.
The elephant in the room.
Yes, then.
Laurel, the select board's talked about it twice, so it's all.
Oh, I know. Well, no, I just, but not everyone listens to select.
No, no, I'm just saying.
I didn't know, but anyway. So that's the elephant in the room. It's, it's only for the care and maintenance of the physical structure. Of the library. My feeling is this should be brought up to discuss if you have any ideas, maybe think about it. At another meeting, because this is already um almost seven o'clock and we haven't gotten to, it's a lot of stuff going on tonight. But that is a wonderful, wonderful gift. There is something, I think, that Kathy sent. Yes, something, it is.
Believe and about their life.
Um, it's a little thing about who Francis Sullivan was, if you didn't know. And um, it's probably this young. So rather than us, um.
She started volunteering at the library in the early, I think, two thousand and two and um.
She was there in the nineties.
Was she?
Yes, volunteer then too, okay.
Yeah, she was a patron.
I'm talking about a volunteer. Yes, it was the early two hundreds that she started volunteering on a regular basis, a couple of days a week. And um was dedicated to the library.
So that was a wonderful gift.
I, I'm not understanding a law. Initially, I was told that. It was for the care and custody of the town treasurer. And um. So now, uh, see, I didn't see the actual letter. I was read the actual letter by her son. Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is from um. The investment company that holds, holds it.
Right, no, I mean.
So, so it is, um, I could pass it around, copy it, whatever. Um, Town of Groveland is the beneficiary.
Right.
And under that, it is to be held in a separate account, so it's not going in with the regular accounts. For maintained by the town treasurer. So she maintained. For the specific purpose of the care and maintenance of the physical structure of the Langley Adams Library. And, you know, located in Groveland, Mass. So she is. Maintaining it, but we still, under our review, as far as I see, this agreement. Would be, um, you know, we say, we'd like to see this, and then it would have to be approved.
Is, is that any different than the state aid and the donor account that the town maintains?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, this, this very different special, yeah. This, I'm imagining would even be invested. By the town.
It will be invested by the town in the Bartholomew funds.
In there, but in a separate, so you know how like in ours, we have the Anna Balch. This will be in the town's Bartholomew account.
Yes.
Francis Sullivan for the library account and it will make.
So this goes back, this is a trust, based on the new procedure, which I haven't signed yet.
No.
That money. It's trust.
Not this. Well, yeah.
It's already taken place, that's, yeah.
The instructions say that we transfer that to Barthol.
Not this, no, not that.
Why not?
This is. This wasn't given. We're not the beneficiary.
The town is the beneficiary.
So that's where I'm unclear. So it says care and maintenance, right? So. Would that mean that if we need a roof, the town will want out of that?
They are suggesting.
Yeah, that was initially brought up.
Can I, can I just finish?
Yep.
Um, in, as opposed to if we wanted to hold this money as separate for if we wanna do an addition. So who's gonna make that decision? Is it gonna just be regular maintenance that the town? Or can we do that, say we wanna hold this? I mean, that's something we have to.
That's gonna be a discussion with the administrator and the treasurer.
Right. So the conversation was that was the first thing that came up.
With the roof?
Yes. Which. It's different, that's, yeah. This, this needs to be a conversation. At another point, we're not going to be spending this money tonight. We have to find out. It's brand new. Yes, and it is. This other agreement.
Chair should be involved too, I would think.
Yes, yes, yes.
I think the talent of it's worth inviting the treasurer to one of our meetings.
Right. Well, I mean, she, she, this is all fairly new to everyone and.
But I think.
No.
In the near future.
Yes, yes.
Or we should sit down with the town treasurer and, and make sure it's clear.
Account, account.
Right. We really need a protocol that we all understand, all agree to.
Treasurer, not accountant. Um, yeah. Anyway, that's. Until it was voted to accept it last night, nothing we could really do. Why wouldn't they vote to accept it? I don't know, but yeah. Um, the other thing that you're talking about is. So when we were just talking with Bartholomew. Um, and having all of the uh deposits and withdrawals. For the Bartholomew account will be going through the town rather than. Just the treasurer. So we decide, we vote what we want, what we're buying, what, you know, whatever. We sign a warrant for it. Goes to the town and they say, we want them, just like we do now with the state aid or with the donation account. There, we go through them, the trust funds, we go through them now, if this is signed. They've all signed it. Um, we just have to wait for Bob's signature.
Well, I just wanted to bring it, bring it all up.
Oh, I was gonna bring it. Oh, she didn't have my signature on it.
My, my point of clarification, today, if we take money out of uh Bartholomew.
Mm-hmm.
Step us through the process of how that happens.
Well, I can step you through. I'll show you right now.
No, 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 no. Do it verbally. Uh, we wanna take a hundred dollars out of this account. What does Bartholomew do to get us the money?
I go, we have to write a war, uh, if, yes, for this, we would have to have a warrant. I go over there, I fill out a slip. I was going to show you that I'm doing for the deposit. It's the same thing as a withdrawal.
Okay.
Michelle signs it, the accountant, I sign it. And she submits it electronically to Bartholomew, that we want a hundred dollars taken out of the Anna Balch. Fund, trust fund. And then she puts it in our account and we can pay, or she, she will actually pay. Right.
Either way, it goes through the warrant process.
Right, definitely. So there's so many checks and balances, even, so like Kathy was saying, technically, as treasurer, I decide which. Trust funds can, you know, we taking the money out of or putting the money into, um. The warrant will have that. I will have that written down for you. I didn't have it written down for the deposits, because. You knew we were closing Vanguard. I mean, this is, we. There's no decision, like, do you want that money? You know, no, it's gonna go to Bartholomew. We, we discussed that, the same thing with closing. Citizens and TD, the, the, so that money are replacing. I have no authority, I have no checkbook, I have nothing. All I do is. Oh, we did.
Oh, we did, okay.
We have, the only thing we have paid extra for is a little bit of bonding from July till now. Till November twenty eighth, and then I'm not bonded after November twenty eighth. Yeah.
And they refunded you the money for the checks, Laurel, right?
I guess, we got reimbursed for that. Ivan, whatever his name is at TD Bank, was very, very helpful with that. And he was very understanding. That's where the whole thing started, was like, we couldn't get a tax ID. You know, and um, so it's been a lot, but yeah, this is the agreement. So technically, this is, is a law. Um, and so we, we met with um. Michelle, vegan, who's the treasurer, Ellen, oh, I'm mixing them up. I'm sorry, Ellen is the accountant. And my son, Rebecca, about this whole. You know, saying with the trust funds and how to go about it and the money exchanging and all this, and they're going technically. Out tax ID. You know, you need the tax ID kind of thing, and you, the towns, we can't use it ourselves. So it's, we, it's, this is an agreement. But it's the law. But they're making the, very nicely made, the whole thing. I'll pass this around. Bob is the only one that has to sign. So, yeah, and I have, I have other copies too, if you wanna, I think I did it, yeah, somewhere here.
Well, it seems like your job is increasing because the reconciliation. Do we have a process?
The reconciliation actually will come. Probably to Dorothy. It will be on that whole.
Right.
I will get it to Bartholomew as well as through Michelle. You will get it on the.
I should be able to run reports.
Run reports to the, um, like you do for, you know, this is.
Yeah, for the special accounts.
Special account.
I can add it to the special accounts reports.
Right.
Yeah.
So this is, you know, it, it, it makes it a lot more, um, yeah, if you wanna pass this so they can read it too. Yeah, that's a good, yeah, that's the one that's blank. These are just copies I need.
I have to run some invoices very soon.
Quick question. State aid and the endowment funds. Are those, are those with?
Already with them.
But is it in the Bartholomew fu- fund for the town?
No.
No.
Or this is an account?
Yeah. Right, exactly. It's just an account that the town maintains.
I can understand state aid.
Donations is the same thing. Yeah.
I don't know why, but.
I don't know, but that's just, it's, it's how the money that, they're not trust funds. That's the thing. There, it's, it's like a hundred dollars here donated to us, a hundred and fifty dollars there. The Jerry Tibbetts thing was an outlier, which was very generous. Um, but they're not. Trust funds, whereas these are specifically trust funds. That's why they're different.
Right.
So there are fewer stipulations when we need to spend.
Right, yeah, we just. Like the trust funds are definitely. Very specific as to. How they can be spent, on what, and only this, and you know, whereas donations is, it can be.
Just to put a ribbon on everything when officer, when a town signed you for the library.
No.
Okay.
No. No, and it makes it way easier across the boards. So anyone who wants to be treasurer in the future.
I know you're having fun though.
Now, this, now, I think this is cleaner. It expediates things, um, it's streamlined, it's just.
And one time, at one time, we did have our own tax ID number. And then that was taken away. Uh, when a new finance director had come in some years back. And then we used the town's tax ID number, but now they've eliminated that. So this is far more streamlined and.
And, and I mean, there is a law, uh, I. It says that the, um, my sentence, I can't remember where it is. Hold on, I gotta find it. So it's gonna be here somewhere. This isn't COA, this is library. Why, why is it listening? Want to be signed, want to be signed. Here we go. Um, it's Mass General Law, chapter forty one, section forty six. The town treasurer shall be the custodian of all funds and securities of such trust funds. So this is under trust funds, shall invest and reinvest them and expend, expend their. From monies as directed by the commissioners. The treasurer shall furnish a bond satisfactory to them for the faithful performance of his duties or her duties. Um, so basically, she's bonded, she or he, but it's a she in this case. So we were supposed to be doing this all along, I guess. But things got lost. And now we're cleaning, town hall is getting cleaned up, so. It's a good thing. We would. Um, so yeah, I think it's a good thing. Any questions about that? With.
The treasurer.
The treasurer.
Yeah.
We can have her, um.
You know, the best way to do that, just so we can be really clear on the.
We can have her.
This particular chunk of money, whether or not, you know.
How it can be.
Right.
How it's gonna be used.
Wanna make sure we say some toward a new addition. You know, building enhancement, probably not just caring custody. That's what, where I'm confused. Caring custody, what does that mean?
Well, on a conversation level, she said, oh, and I, she said, oh, Vanessa. You know, what I'm wondering is, I'm wondering if this could go towards. In addition to the meeting room, since the town really needs a meeting space. You know, maybe a little door here, a little door there, bathroom, this could be a meeting space, lock everything else up. Have it after hours. And she was, oh, she's, well, I don't think it would be enough to pay, but I said, it can go towards it.
Yeah, so, um.
Could you send her an invite for her for the next meeting? No, after the first of the year.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say no before then, and I'm like.
Oh, not at all.
Yeah, I mean, and.
For January?
And it could be Zoom, yeah.
Well, it would depend on her schedule too.
Right, right. So.
Two hundred and twenty-five.
I just wanted to mention that the MBLC construction grants, they'll cover. Most of it when you're awarded a grant, but a chunk like this particular amount of money. Is usually required by the town to pay as toward it. Is usually required by the town to pay as toward it. Um, and this might actually take that burden off of the town and let it. Get done much easier, so of course I would have to check to see what the MBLC requirements are, if it. Does have to be actually voted on at town meeting, and. It does have to be town tax money, hopefully not, because that money is there. Um, but it's pretty much the amount of money that would be required. Yeah.
Right, and this is.
Yeah.
Yes, um. This is a wonderful donation.
Yes, thank you, Frances. Yes.
That was my first conversation Laurel too with Michelle was, she said, oh, good, this will pay for a new roof, and I said, or.
You told me that, then I went in and said the same thing.
Have to be, is this a kind of agreement, and does an addition count for care and maintenance of the actual building, so.
Thank you. Yes, it's been a busy month.
Okay, me. Okay. Well, handle the regular directors' report stuff first, cause I know there's a lot here too. Um, and I'll try to like, be quick through, I mean, the numbers, does anybody have questions about the numbers? Really standard, um, I will read the warrants. Twenty-five fifteen, that's the only warrant that was spent in October. Was five thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents, and that was the total for October. Um, in the heiress financial report and state aid section, I noted that last week we were certified. For, um, you know, certification and state aid, which is fantastic. Um, I also shared the, the number via email with everybody. Um, I think it was about eighty-eight hundred or so, that is the first half. Um.
Yeah.
Which I, you know, these past few years, state aid has been increasing, it's based on circulation numbers, which is. Um. Very nice, so any questions about that? That first half should be wired to us fairly soon, within the next few weeks. Hey. Furniture update, there's a lot with the furniture update, but I tried to put together what has been ordered. What's on, what's going to be ordered, um, reasons why. Um, I have some invoices mainly from. Uh, Worthington Direct and Office Chairs USA, there's also the, um. Whenever Kathy is ready, I can run through the, um, the reimbursement process as well. For the, um, the charging stations, cause we have.
I just got the bill today, so I'll be.
Okay.
To reimburse.
Okay, thank you Kathy for doing that.
Yes, that was, that was a wonderful thing, that, that helped a lot, because from that website, you have to put in a card. Yes, it was much appreciated, so. We're still waiting on the, the lounge chairs, those, those have been ordered, and I have the invoice. And the square tables, which have been ordered from Demco, but, um, they send the invoice after shipping. So, we don't have that invoice yet, but I do have the total from the order. And the total was about what was calculated last month for those. Um. But yes, I tried to find a cheaper price for the lounge chairs, and I, I think. It was a little bit cheaper, hopefully, it seemed like a little bit. Um. So, that's what has been. Ordered and is on order and all of that, and I also earlier sent the information about. Um, deaccessioning, so, yes, just to reiterate what Rebecca said was our fabric. Furniture that has been here for forty years, we don't have to worry about deaccessioning it, um. We can just get rid of it, we can like donate the wood if we want to donate the wood somewhere, but. It's pretty safe to not have to go through the process with that, but I think it's. Safe, it covers us to deaccession the other items, the wooden items. Cause even if they're not. Wonderful in the library, they can be used for other things, um. From other people, maybe wittier, who knows, um. So that was ten wooden chairs, I, let me just go through what I sent. I just wanna make sure I'm saying the right thing here. Do, do, do. Okay, so, they, there are three wooden square tables, ten wooden chairs that. Have historically gone with the tables, and two wooden chairs on casters, and they do have fabric on them. Um, but it's a very low, like a tiny amount of fabric, um. Doesn't make it very comfortable, so. Um, they're mostly wood anyway, they're basically the same thing as the wood chairs, except they're on wheels and they have a tiny bit of fabric. Um, so, it's playing it safe would be deaccessioning those items.
So you have a list that you can send out, but. Is that, is that how it's done, Darcy? There used to be a list that was sent out to people who may be interested in. Items that are no longer needed by one specific.
Well, that would, that I presume would be the plan after the board votes to deaccession them, just. Um. Yeah, what's, you know, I have to, I think, offer them up to town departments first. And then, um, Rebecca said she would help me with this too. Um, and then see if there's interest out in the community.
Right.
So, um, as these items come in, we can start. Deaccepting them, but we could say. The, the vote can be, you know, deaccession with the stipulation that we have the other items first, I think. That might be the safest way to do it, since we, we, we want, we want tables, and we don't wanna be without tables. You know, so.
I make a motion to deaccession in a timely manner of the, uh, items that are no longer needed by the library. And dispose of what would not be suitable for any other group or department.
Discussion, all those in favor, Laurel?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Jay? Jan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Alright, fabulous.
I just added that. Twenty thousand, I added it twice.
Did you include the, um, the YA stuff, because that's not.
Oh, so.
YA comes out of the donation account under.
It'll be in honor of Jerry, um. Oh, I don't think I actually put the number there because of that, so never mind, never mind, you did it right. Yeah, that, that, that'll, that's the trust fund stuff, um, I didn't put the YA.
It's alright, cause we, we're putting in more than that, so.
How do we have a final number at our next meeting?
Like a spreadsheet.
Yeah, and, um, yeah, hopefully I can send in the invoices very soon.
Yes, yeah, I mean.
Do the, run the warrants.
I have to bring all that.
Yeah, just keep me posted, like, when I, I'm able to do it.
With all together, the same one, so.
Yeah, I just need access to be able to pick the account that. It would come from when I run the warrant. Uh.
I mean, it seems to me, I don't understand how you can do it at the same time, it seems to me the money's got to be in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Jan, could you speak up?
I said, I'm not sure, um, that doing those transactions at the same time makes sense, because you have to have the. Money deposited and a new warrant number for the, like, new account number.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You said you send it off with. And I was like, okay, but.
Yeah, so I need access to the account numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, once everything's all settled, I can settle that with Ellen.
I'll come tomorrow.
Okay, we'll talk about it, we'll talk about it, we don't need to, this is a long meeting already.
Right, right.
Okay, alright, moving on, unless there are other questions about all of this. Yeah, US Newsstream jumped, uh.
You haven't received notification that anything is on delay that you've ordered, extended delay or anything?
No, uh, the, the website for Demco does say the tables take like forty-eight days or something.
Okay.
Something like that, um, so they, they give you that information upfront. Um, but the, the, the blue chairs for the new tables, those are here, the conversational tables are here. The charging stations are here.
Something you mentioned in your report that needed to be paid upfront, what was it, Darcy, do you?
Oh, no, the flag.
Oh, that.
Oh, the flag, so I. Sorry?
You can use my charge card again to do that if you want.
Okay, thank you Kathy, we'll, we'll talk tomorrow too.
Okay.
So that I can take care of that and that we can actually have a flag. Um. Okay. So, Asabet up for renewal, it's pretty standard, it's time. Um, it didn't, I don't think it increased in price at all, and it's cheaper than. We usually do stating.
I make a motion to pay for Asabet out of state aid, and what was the total amount?
Fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
I second.
All those in favor, Laurel?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Jan? Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
Thank you. Um, as you can see, US Newsstream dumped in use, I, I mean, I have been advertising it more, it's. The first thing in the newsletter, pretty much every, every month. Um, and I've also been pointing patrons to it when they ask about articles and things like that. Um, because we have access to the Globe, New York Times, a whole bunch of things. So. It's.
Make a motion that we pay two thousand one hundred seventy dollars and seventy-eight cents from state aid. That'd be good, cause this is a material, isn't it?
Hey, hey.
Materials. Um, no, for US Newsstream.
I second it.
So, wouldn't that count as being spent?
Yes. Yeah, suppose it's a digital.
What's the amount again?
Two thousand one hundred seventy dollars, seventy-eight cents for US Newsstream.
Okay, we had a first and second?
Yeah, second.
I did.
All those in favor, Laurel?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Jan? Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bob, yes.
Thank you.
No, but we, we can use state aid for it.
Okay, yeah, but I'm just saying, I was trying to put materials, we would get that nineteen percent, but that's not what.
Oh, it'll contribute to it though.
It will, okay.
Yeah. It'll, it'll even probably. Look, look better, because we'll have to spend more. Um, okay, so I also sent everyone the email newsletter, because Bob and I had discussed it. And it's just good to keep everybody in the know about what's going on, so, I.
I recommended it because when you take a look at it, it's very professionally done, striking, it tells us everything, everything that's going on.
I.
I get it.
But just in case, it's always good to, to look through it again before the meeting, I, I even did so.
Sending that to the select board too.
Yeah.
So that's great.
Yeah, I've been, I keep up with sending it to the select board, um, keep them in the know. Uh, and then coming up, December, it'll be budget time, so. Another fun meeting, it's next month. They're having a lot of fun. Uh, oh, okay, meeting room policy, that I almost forgot about. Oh, and we have the action plan, what would you like to do first? Okay. Alright, meeting room policy didn't change much, I changed a little bit of the wording to make it a little bit, um, more modern. Just, you know, where it said. Provide address and phone number, I also included email. Email address, um, the requests may be made through email or phone. Um, by contacting the library director, that I changed that, cause that was. Um, in person, phone, email was kind of as a. You know.
This is good, yeah.
I mean, most of the, the.
I like this, that you added the responsible person, so there's a contact person, there is a.
Yes, um, so they. Um. Think that might have been there before, so I won't take, oh, where, where did I put that?
Wait, it's under reservations, oh, you're, you're, I, you were reading the through email.
Oh, yeah, 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 uh, name, what I added was email address.
Oh, okay.
Most of it was actually on point for what's still necessary.
Okay.
Um. No, I haven't, so, just, um, for the current precedent, I haven't been doing a form. Um, what I have been doing is making sure, they, they contact me, I make sure it follows all the guidelines. And then, um, I make sure we don't have any library programs or anticipated library programs, and then I say. Okay, this is fine, I put it on the staff side of our calendar, so no one books the space. Um, we can co-book the space because we have two sides now, um, so there are. Some, some groups that have done that so far, nothing, nothing of consequence, but, um. So, no, I haven't been doing the form, but. It's, there, there's a form that did exist, but I, I've felt that it isn't really needed. There's, there's a module that Asabet has that is a room booking thing. However, I think it's for libraries that actually have more rooms to book, like this one. Usually has a library program going on, it's, it's pretty rare that we can say.
Yeah.
Okay, you can use it this evening, because usually there's. Um.
I guess I had a question though, if somebody just walks in, say a tutor with a student.
Mm-hmm.
They're using the run, they ask, could they come in and use the room?
We have been kind of loosey-goosey with that, I will say, um, and I think.
Me too.
I've been trying to cut out my. Yeah.
I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Sometimes I, um, I hear people say, well, only Darcy can book it.
Yeah, so.
So that's where I'm confused, like, how.
So it is at the very end, um, which was what here, it was here before, to discuss exceptions to the policy. So that should hopefully cover that, yes, sometimes there are exceptions to the guidelines, cause. Because honestly, most of this says guidelines, and guidelines and policies are technically different.
Right.
So. Um. Right. Yes. Um, so anything that's not covered or just to discuss exceptions, they can contact me. Um. And if other staff want to help somebody book the room, they can come to me. I'll, I can make that clear to them too.
To me, like, anytime it needs to be used, it should, if possible.
Yeah.
Do we have a calendar for usage of this form?
We we do, it's a Google Calendar that we were using for a while. Um, yeah, for staff.
For you, and if someone walks in and you're not here, and Sue or Matt or whatever, takes a look at it, says, oh. As long as no one's using it between whatever time you want it, you're you're good to go.
Yeah.
Sometimes with it, for example, tutoring session.
Yeah.
It's no idea out there.
It is, yeah.
And I mean, I myself, I didn't even remember, we had something like this, and I should have. I came in on a Saturday and said, no one's in here, and I set up two tables and I cut out fabric. You know, they said bye, and they even came and helped me.
Yeah.
Helped me set the tables and stuff, so I mean, I would, if there had been something else going on or somebody needed it, I would have gotten out, it was just that. What am I gonna, I have, you know, my my.
Yeah. Yes, so I do keep track of that in my spreadsheet. Um.
So she's already keeping track of.
Yeah.
That, yeah, in in the future.
Yeah.
And you know, I wonder if people even know that this space can be used.
I think some people do. Some people come in and say, hey, can I just sit in here for thirty minutes? I have a virtual doctor's appointment and obviously if it's not being used, but you know, again, exceptions to the policy.
Right.
Yeah. So I mean, if there's any wording that you suggest gets changed, I can do that and we can amend it. Um. Big, or the calendar can just be a staff procedure, which doesn't need to be approved by the trustees. We could just do calendar, which is fine.
I think it should be at the discretion of the director and the staff. I think we can probably micromanage it to the point where we have, can't cover everything and.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why we have a director.
That's right, I agree.
That's why.
Okay, no, whoops, I get it, it's good.
Yeah, maybe, maybe just add under reservations or something. Something to the effect that. Doesn't have to be reserved like a week in advance.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Just to make it a little more welcoming to folks that maybe they they walk in and all the tables are taken up out there and they want to. Somebody.
And it's sort of completely empty, and they should be able to come in and use it.
What's that, Kathy?
It it, like you said, if all the tables and chairs are taken up out in the main part of the library. And people come in and they need to do something to tutoring that type of thing, and that room is completely empty. They should be able to mention it to establish and come in and use it.
Right, right, that that's my my point that just. You know.
Yeah.
Have it be used as much as possible for the.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, so reservations do not need to be made. In advance if the meeting room is available.
Catch can, you come in and it's jumping and you need it, use it.
Testing, something like that.
Yeah, some.
I can, I can play with the wording, but I see what you mean.
Thing, if you're having a group, if you're training, it's come here at eight, you know, maybe eight o'clock at night. You know, and you you are expecting to come here at five, but it's another thing, you're coming here, it's like, oh, it's not being used, can I come in here? You know.
I know that's more work because you have to make sure. That, say something is happening at six, that you tell the person, well, you can have it.
Have it, but you have to be out. Right.
Yeah, if Evangeline has to set up for a program or.
Right, right, so if you come in off the street and say, gee, can I use the meeting room for, you know.
I'd only be able to if it happened now.
Right.
According to the schedule.
And they will look at the schedule, say, well, something's happening.
Yeah, first come, first served basis makes precedent for sure.
Okay, yeah, I can add that in as an amendment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Talking about the newsrooms.
Yes, that just needs to be. So.
Want to make a motion?
Oh, forgive me, within a minute. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting room. How uh agreement, policy, policy, um.
As amended?
As amended.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, no?
Yeah.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lee? Yes.
Bob, yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me, is Caitlin not here? Oh, I didn't realize, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Um. And you know that, and having it as a meeting, like signed up, and if if you need to report that for your errors report.
Helps keep track of numbers.
Keeps track of. Maybe maybe put something out in the next newsletter that, did you know you can use our meeting room? You don't want tens, millions of people coming, but.
I'll figure something out.
To, you know, and may maybe wanna look at putting on. Right.
Yeah, I. It does, yeah, people do come in and ask to use it too, so.
Right.
So that makes sense.
Yeah.
Um. Okay. So the action plan is next. Um, I tried to include something for each goal. The biggest thing, what I concentrated on was technology, because that was the biggest. Request from the strategic planning survey. Um. So that has the. Technically, goal one also has the same amount of. Of actions, but I figured these actions were doable. And some of them were suggested by by staff and board members, so. I thought that it would. Be good to submit. Doesn't mean we can't do other things, but these are, I think are good.
What is your deadline for submission, Darcy?
December first.
December first, okay.
The the PC Park Collaborative Act Two.
Hmm.
So you're thinking of working with Vanessa on that or?
Yeah, so in the past, for example, not that we have to do everything like we have always done it, but. You know, we've had hikes on their trail and we've had crafts there and we've had. Um. Yeah, uh.
Labor Day programs there.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a lot there and I think, um, you know. Building back that bridge would be good and it also, um, opens the door for. Looking toward other community partnerships, so.
Good.
Intergenerational, first hand.
Yes, I put that on two sections because it's applicable to two sections. I think I put that on two. I might not have. But it's very valuable. And, um, I think that was also a request. I know, I thought I did, but I didn't.
I think I just read it twice in the same place.
I, yeah, um, but also very valuable. I think also it was discussed by staff when I brainstormed with them, so.
Right. This looks good.
Anybody has anything you'd like me to add? This is definitely the time. Um, but it's, you know, I I of course tried to focus on, especially you've probably read. One of my goals this coming year is to focus, big focus on upgrading our technology, not just computers, but.
Right.
Other things. Um.
I don't know this, but we're going on successful community partnerships. I know in the past, there's been a partnership to the schools that kind of disbalance.
Yes, um, I do.
Schools and or, you know.
It seems to be from what I've heard from both our current youth services librarian and the previous one. So it doesn't mean that they're not open to anything, it's just they, I think there's a lot of busyness.
They have too much going on.
It's very possible that they're just very busy, but I do agree that to keep reaching out, yeah.
There's only the one, I think, right now. That is. Perry Park and then.
Yeah. Yeah.
I know, you know, the youth services used to go in, they used to come to my place, they used to go to Perry Park. And they went to Kids World and she would do like a little Susie.
Yeah, I know also, uh, Megan in Perry Park.
Yeah.
And I actually used to read it back now.
Yeah, and I mean.
We alternated.
And I didn't know, I think it stopped when we had COVID.
Yes.
And it hasn't started up, is it because of schools? I know we have enough stuff going on.
Yeah, so how about I add in an established connection with local schools?
Right.
Very.
Home day, home daycare people come here, though. That's what they like, I think. The caregivers come.
I can put schooling.
Right. Yeah, but you, do you think that they would do the kindergarten? Kids getting a card, right?
I hope so. I I plan to, again, part of my thing is to offer more. Uh, support, but kind of also help and also prep Evangeline for like an easy, like an early, like. Get into contact with them.
I would think that that would be a good goal. Their signal to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because, um, all we have under that is programming.
That makes sense, yeah, I see.
Maybe. Just to host the annual. Kindergarten kids getting a library card.
Yeah.
No, there's not even a library then.
Right.
No, there is.
Oh, there is now?
Um, I think so.
I think, yeah, I think that has changed.
Unless I heard it.
And the current event we did the last time is. Then they can see the fire department, you know.
Yes.
Big deal out of it, and it's great, the kids love it.
That was a rite of passage.
I know.
Yes.
I agree. No kid should not have that experience.
Do you know that my grandson, who is now in first grade?
Yeah.
His second year, first grade, has not been on one field trip.
Yeah, you were saying last year.
And not this year either.
Yeah.
Why?
So, okay. Okay, I'm on it, so spring twenty twenty.
I should have sent that, I know we were supposed to send them, I forgot.
That's okay, so I'll come up with better wording, I just wrote kindergarten day because I know what that is. And then we can add that in addition to establish connection with local schools, preschools, sibling.
All connected.
Right.
We can add two more things onto there that works perfectly.
I love it.
Um.
A motion that we accept the action bring up wouldn't be, isn't it?
I second that. Sorry, I can't hear.
Laurel?
Yes.
Jan?
Yeah.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Darcy, can I just ask, who's taking the minutes at this meeting?
Caitlin's going to listen to the recording and complete them. She's been doing it, and then she said she would listen to the recording.
Oh, okay.
It is from there.
How do you submit this?
I, um, attached the file to a website that is attached to MBLC.
Okay.
Uh, their website, it's it's kind of like submitting things through Amplifund, sort of. One of their offshoots that they have. I also submitted the strategic plan through it.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I know.
Is it possible for you to send, when you send it to them, to send it to the board, so?
Yeah, I can attach it to an email to everybody, um, and also after I send it to. To MBLC, where there are different processes, but I can do that, totally fine. Send it to the board as well.
Evaluation. Will be one smile.
And I apologize for sending out a somehow popping it over. All I had was my original from last year, so I'd take all my X's out and all my comments and everything. And then when I sent it to, then I sent it the wrong way and I could do doc. When I did doc, the whole piece came out and I didn't realize it.
They got it done, don't worry.
Yeah.
It got done anyway.
We've all done stuff like that, though.
Because I think, uh, well, except one, everything came out three and above.
Yeah.
Which I think is good, I can't remember what it was like. Uh, when I put it together, I was going crazy because I thought, oh, people who send me the Word document. I could do a cut and paste.
Yeah.
But going back and forth, back and forth, that would be four. It just didn't work, so I printed everything out and I typed it, so, yeah, if there are typos in there, it's on me.
It's gotta be a better way.
There's gotta be a better way, and I think if we do this again next year with this form, it's it's gotta be, uh. Say Excel, because Excel you could do formats in there, put everything one, cut and paste. Or you could do a. Tab one, two, three, four, five, six.
Even do the calculations on Excel.
The, you just said it hit me.
Yeah, I know.
Another language, I had no idea what you just said.
That's one of the, one of the problems, there are people that use paper.
And can't, right.
Adjust to that.
Did you get all of them electronically though this time?
I didn't know how to do it, so I did it on paper.
And Kathy sent hers in paper, right?
Yeah.
Which is fine.
Yeah, yeah, it's just.
Okay, so how do we want to approach this? We go one, group by group, and we'll go through the discussion if necessary? Sure, do you have a, do you have a copy or?
Why don't we let Darcy?
I think I said a lot already.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I can, if if you would like, I mean, I do feel like the chair also. Has the right to to lead the discussion, we could do it together.
Well, but Darcy was good enough to give us an advanced copy of her comments.
Comments, yes.
As a starting point.
You can, yes, I didn't have comments on every single section, obviously.
There were times when some members of the staff indicate disappointment with decisions that the director makes. Uh. Helpful to know what these decisions are.
Yes.
Can I, can I tell them about that? It's basically a conversation twice.
Yes.
And my feeling about it is, I have had dozens of jobs in my life, and I've never had a supervisor that I agreed with all the time.
Exactly.
He does.
Those comments.
He does.
What's that? What, Kathy?
Nobody, eh, all the time agrees with their supervisor.
Exactly, yeah, so I didn't.
That's why it should have been qualified.
Yeah.
Yeah, eh, exactly.
If there was a real issue, it should have been qualified, because nobody's always happy with what their boss tells them.
No, never.
Hardly anybody, that's the thing. I mean, I would like to know what those are, so I. If there is something constructive, I can address it.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly. I think that should be ignored.
Not to you.
Right.
To avoid them.
Right, not.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be managing them along.
Darcy gets it right on the head with the email, she says, no supervisor's going to make a decision that that way. One, one of the things I, I I fault now. One, one of the things I, I, I fault ourselves. Uh, if we're putting something down on piece of paper negative and we're doing the evaluation. And this hasn't brought up in a personal conversation with the director or anyone else, it's the problem. This shouldn't be the first time.
Exactly, and, and I'm, and I'm gonna add one thing to that. I, if you read the trustee's manual, the, the trustees are not discuss, are not supposed to be discussing with staff. The director leads the staff, trustees don't discuss with staff about their problems or their issues. That's a real wrong thing to do. It, it's interfering with the supervision of the director. And to listen to people bitch and moan, and they're not gonna go anywhere else with it, is wrong. And it's, it's betrayal, it is a betrayal of our director, and I don't think that's right.
Well, we really don't have, th- this statement really means nothing, because, I mean, nobody agrees with. Decision all the time, so I think we can.
Yeah.
Responses too, that are, it really lead to the fact that trustees need to pull back and stop discussing with staff. Their complaints, if they have complaints, they go to the director, if they're not satisfied with going to the director, then they go to the personnel manager at town hall. They don't put trustees in that position, trustees are here to support the director and set policy for the library.
Well, again, we still don't know the context of that statement.
Yeah, I, it's, it's not clear.
It's not clear at all whether somebody just observed something, or.
Talking. Or heard something, or was having a bad day.
We all have bad days, that's the thing, and.
I have bad weeks.
Increase, yeah, I've had a bad year. But it, um, you know, it just serves to increase employee bias, so. You know, I mean.
What they can, what can they expect a tr- a trustee to do about it? Trustees are here to support the director and to set policy for the library.
Well, I think clearly maybe we should just review at our next meeting the, the decorum, you know, you don't. A trustee doesn't call a staff member?
Well, we, right.
Right, cause you know, and if the trustee sees a problem, they should take it to Darcy. I mean, we just do that.
Yes, and.
Rather than belabor it now.
And you have modeled that, well, to me, like, that's, that was kind of the, eh, for my goals, that was kind of, um, an in. Inspiration for one of my goals, so I just wanted to mention that, cause I know it was also mentioned in the comments. And I was like, yes, exactly, because it was something that I needed to hear. For, you know, the support for the programs, we'll get there. Support for staff outside programming.
And going through these comments, I saw, one that was amazed me, what each staff member does and how they. That's not the business of the trustees, that's the business of the director.
I think it's, uh, later in the.
Oh, okay, I think from this one.
Yeah.
Can we go to category two, support of governance, board, board governance? Anyone wanna add to these?
So I do agree with the third comment, I think I kind of dropped the ball with. The, the statements and stuff, and I, I, I own up to it. So, going forward, you know, I'm trying to communicate better with that, I. You know, I think sometimes I had a, just a lot going on, I would just like, put it in the little mailbox, the mailbox has been there since I've been. Before I've been director, however, I should have been communicating with the board that stuff was in there. So I own up to it, and, um, I, I do appreciate that comment, because. I think it's, it's helpful, it's accurate, so.
Problem solved.
Yeah, I will be going forward, making sure I correct that.
Oh, can I have a quick question, it's Lindsay? Could someone real quick just forward me that email, because for some reason I have Nancy's reply, but I don't have Robert's original email with the attachment?
What the, the, um, commentary or the?
I have the commentary, I don't have, was there an original consolidation form?
Yes.
Yes.
And I don't have a copy of that.
Okay, just a second, um.
Laurel's on it.
What am I doing?
I know, which board? Which town department?
Alright, I think I sent the right thing. We'll find out soon, no, it says about director's evaluation consolidation.
Of course, there was a chain on that.
I know, well, this is.
I should have.
Did you get it?
It should be the very first one in there. If not, I can try. I should have started a new.
Did you get it?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, good.
Good work, Laurel. We're doing that for her.
Magic circle.
I do, I do that, you know, they think I'm a jester.
Support of board governance. Just finish with that.
Technological.
Technological support and collection are relevant. These are all high scores.
Doing my best.
Good.
I'm gonna do more this coming year, I have, I am starting to put together an actual plan.
That's great.
Yeah.
Organization and time management. All positive.
Excellent.
Personnel and staff staffing.
Okay, there was, yeah, this one turned into a bit of a doozy, however, I feel like there's still some. Misinformation, misinterpretation out there, that I wanted to correct.
Confidential things that you could not disclose?
Yep, and I, I didn't, you know, when I did respond, I didn't put what the personnel issue was. However, I did wanna make it clear that there was a reason behind what I chose. And that the, the public was not necessarily given.
Given it.
Yeah, they, they weren't given, in my opinion.
It couldn't be, yeah.
Yeah, they weren't, in my opinion, given a truthful narrative, but. That's not your fault, obviously.
Um, this, this comment is deleted, I still have the battle scars from that whole episode. I feel very comfortable not discussing it.
Well, remember Bob, when I said being chair is easy, sometimes it's not.
Yeah.
That was not a good time.
My brain is still broken from.
I'm very impressed that I ended the time you and you ran with it.
Seriously take your comments.
Yeah, I mean, thank you, I know everyone here was here for the. Not, I mean, not everyone on the board was here for the February eighth meeting, that's the thing, so.
That may be why.
That might be why, and you know, if that wasn't disclosed to that person, then that's not their fault either. However, I, I think at this point, it would be appropriate to disclose more information. Privately.
Fine, do it privately, but privately isn't gonna stay private.
You know what, it's, you've been there, done that, it's over.
Yeah, it's over with, it's over with.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping. Sometimes I feel like, yeah, I mean, there will be the occasional Facebook comment when I post a poster. For a program, but hopefully with this comment, it's.
But there were confidential issues in that, there were confidential personnel issues. And confidential personal issues that you could not disclose, so you had to sit and take it. And that was unfortunate.
Which you did very professionally.
You absolutely did, yes.
Thank you, I mean, I, I'll admit there were parts to it that I didn't handle. The best, and you probably all know what that particular one is, however, with the former staff member, I believe. It was the right decision, and now we can move forward, we have a new. Youth Services Librarian, who is lovely.
Yeah, and.
It's never a bad word about her, people rave about her.
Yeah.
And you're doing more team building and.
Yes, and we are doing staff trainings, I.
Yeah, I think.
We are doing it, so, and I, I agree that it's, it should be an ongoing thing, no matter what.
So I see it coming here about staff handbook, do it, should be completed.
Yeah, it's something I started working on a few years ago, and it's not complete, because. Uh, the policy should be in there, and the policy has kept being updated, and then, um, then. I, I don't know, my brain was broken at the beginning of the year, but I, yeah, I, I agree. I agree, that's why I didn't bring it to that part, cause I agree, uh, it's, it's something that even was my idea. And I asked one of the board members for help with it, and I have part of it written, so.
What is it we're talking about, Darcy, I missed it?
Oh, the, um, so. A handbook for staff, um, that I have been working on for the past like four years now. No, it's not four years, it may be three.
And can some of that be pulled out of the handbook the town hall has passed out for new employees?
Some of it, some of it is just procedures. Some of it, I need to go through and make sure the procedures are still our procedures, but. Um, from what I've written, but I agree that it's something I need to be working on, so. I, I appreciated the comment.
I, I missed quite a bit, because reception is kind of hard, but, um. It was, some, someone made a comment as though the first, I took it, as though. The first time there was an LSTA grant was, uh, with the former youth services librarian. And that's not the first time, there's been many LSTA grants, um, many Mother Goose on the loose, and. Every Community Reads, or, or the same book, there's been many. And I know one of them I managed myself, after our director had left to work for the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. And I worked with the staff member to put that through, so this wasn't the first. LSTA grant, and I know that we constantly look for more, so I'd like to just correct that, it's just a matter of somebody not understanding that.
But Kathy, we're, we're, that's way the bu- we're going, um, step by step here.
Oh, okay, I.
Yeah, and we are on, uh, number.
We'll be getting to six.
We're going on number six.
Okay, thank you.
And that's like number ten or eleven.
Okay, so I, so we eliminate all.
Sorry. We're on six, planning and programming, right, unless you had more to say about five. Personnel and staffing.
I think, again, that last comment, wherever that came from, I think that, that's just like, that's just reality. Worried about that, I don't know where.
Yeah.
It's just too big.
It is big, I just didn't know how.
What was the comment?
Uh, that there are times when some members of the staff indicate disappointment with decisions that their director makes, which. Yes, they are going to.
Right.
That's life.
Right. And maybe that's a reminder to the staff too, at a staff meeting, that, you know.
Yeah.
And you really, don't talk to the trustees, well, you know, you don't talk to the public about it, you, you deal with it. You know, because, and it could be happening with members of the public, and that's gotten back to the trustee, we don't know. You know, there's not enough information there.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I mean, it's always better to talk to somebody directly.
I, I agree. I've been able to address things when they're.
You don't, you don't know how to fix it, you don't know about it.
Yeah. On to six, um, the only part I had was, I promise I do do the desk, I just wanted it, it's Friday. But I do do the desk, I do do the bins, especially on Fridays, um, I worry, um, some other days that I'll get in the way, but. I try, I do try to make myself. Available for that, especially just on Fridays, we do feel the understaffing a lot of the time. So, everything else I completely agree with in the comment, I just wanted to make sure that it's known, I mean. No, I don't do it as much as everybody else, but, um.
Well, you have different responsibilities than everyone else.
Yes, yes, I, I promise I do interact with patrons. Worry about it, I don't.
Some of it is probably inherent in the fact that you're in an office and it's enclosed, and everyone else.
Yeah, they're right in front of the desk, like, well, behind.
Right.
You know, depending on the direction you're standing in. Yes, yes, so, I mean, of course, if somebody is at the desk and I see that. I don't see someone come in, come within the next few seconds, I do get up and do it, even if I do. Am in the middle terrace or something, that always just automatically saves anyway. So, yeah, I, I agree with the rest, so I appreciate the, the feedback, and that was part of. The, um, part of the goal where I said, um, work with staff to increase our outreach and. Uh, offer that support to the staff, um, yeah. Cause I agree.
Onto seven.
Okay.
The person who submitted the, uh, uh. It's not me, but I added three more, what's with Facebook page is getting busier?
Where are we?
Item seven?
Yeah, I'm on.
The, the third statement.
Oh, yeah, um, Facebook page is getting busier.
In my personal opinion, if you go into Facebook, you know, fine, go to Facebook, but don't.
Yeah, but on our actual page. So I will say a lot of the comments are my mom trying to increase our algorithm.
And I always count on mom.
My person thought, here we go again.
Yes, hopefully it means our, our own Facebook. Yeah.
I think the last comment though, it doesn't, it doesn't end. It doesn't seem like the community, it was.
I, I, what was that one?
It's just like a dot, 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 doesn't finish the sentence.
Yeah, I couldn't figure that one. Or maybe the, meaning the community isn't this far.
Oh, I mean, I think there are always gonna be some programs that are more popular than others, so. I think it's a matter of feeling out the current climate of programs, which. You know, there, there are some. Programs on both the sides, youth and adult, that.
This is Facebook.
Have more or less.
The sentence wasn't finished, I didn't.
Yeah, I mean, my guess is.
And then people are like, so, you know.
If you go on it, you'll see my mom comment a lot. But I think it's supposed to be like, it doesn't seem like the. Um, but I think it's supposed to be like it doesn't seem like the community is responding, something like that. That's my guess, but I can't. Say for sure.
Well, you have to follow it.
Yeah.
Maybe people aren't following that.
Yeah, I I do sometimes with bigger events, tag the everyone tag. I try to.
Do that, okay.
Yes.
Following, so I don't know.
So you get the the notification for that, yeah. Um, I I think you have the option of liking or following um or both.
I do whatever.
Liking will. Lindsay has to sign off.
Good night, Lindsay.
Night, Lindsay.
Say hello to the natives. Oh, it's a week.
Yeah, I know, I did that math in my head immediately. I was like, oh, no. Uh, so. Yeah, I mean, I'll just monitor the responses to the the Facebook. Posts.
I think that's, yeah.
That's all I can do.
Aren't they?
Or even ask maybe to Evangeline can ask like, how did you hear about this program every now and then?
Yeah.
Or maybe she's already doing that with the.
She is sometimes, yes.
Get a little more input. Are they seeing or do you know we have a Facebook page? I don't.
Or even Sue with her.
Yeah, exactly. I was just thinking of the kids ones. I mean, initially.
Yeah. I do know that there are some libraries that.
You know, with programming outreach, so.
Yes.
That was on my mind.
Um. Next one.
Number eight.
It's fiscal and budgetary.
Witnessed it.
Yeah, and I mean, we'll be also witnessing it next month. I have some. I have a wish list item that I'll be discussing with you when, cause I I will be bring kind of one up. I not brainstorming necessarily, but discussing it through with you as the treasurer, so. Um.
But that's not.
Yeah, we have so much to, we have so much to talk about tomorrow.
I've got lunch with my husband at eleven thirty.
Not anymore.
Yeah, you have to make a reservation and you eat fast in the next, but. Anyway, so I can come afterwards if you're gonna be here.
Yeah.
Okay, there won't be morning then.
Nine and ten, professional activity and grantmanship. Those are the only categories and there's a significant number of trustees that.
Yeah.
Tells us something.
Um, I will say I am an ALA member. That helps things. I know we also at some point. voted for the library to become ALA member and I need to follow up with that, but that will happen. Um.
But do you go to conferences and meetings like I?
I have gone to the ALA conferences. Uh. It kind of took a backseat when COVID happened. It's also a reimbursement process, which is very tough for me right now.
That's that's what I'm wondering. You can do it up ahead, cause I remember that.
That's, yeah, they don't invoice, they you you. Well, you.
You pay and then you.
And then I. Yes, here's my receipt, submit.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, I do try to take advantage of the. Um, online trainings and workshops and programs that they offer. And I have directed staff to also do ones that. Are mostly free because I don't think they're ALA members, but they will hopefully be when we. Officially, I figure out how to officially have the library join, but.
I thought we did join, no?
Not if not, uh, it's not the paperwork's not done, but the the vote was was done. So I need to follow up with that. I think it slipped between some other.
Cause that's, they really offer a lot of good training, I.
Yes, though I will say a lot of the trainings do, you still have to pay even as a member.
Right, but as much, yeah.
But also MLS is currently offering a lot of really good ones, so I've I've been. Keeping up with staff.
Cause I remember back in the day, it's like they were, you were going to conferences and people were going. For that, yeah.
Yeah.
Book fair in New York that.
Yeah, that. Yeah, the book expo shut down. Yes, it shut down a few years ago. Sue was very sad. Yeah, she loved that.
She made a lot of connections there.
Yes.
Hmm.
So, I mean, you know, she she even played with the idea of going to Neela this year, but. Ultimately decided not to, but that was her decision. I. So. Um. I kind of. Um, I think MLA is in Falmouth. I actually would like Matt to attend that there, cause of. Technology stuff.
That would be wonderful.
Um, so that I've 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 already talked to him about that, so. When it uh the spring, um, I think April or May.
Hmm, okay. Didn't, and you didn't know, so that's how these.
Discuss it. Don't worry about it. Like, it's it's important to discuss it. Um, yeah, there's, I mean, I just did their evaluations. That's why it was also on my mind. Does any have any questions about that? Okay, we're we're getting. Ten, grantmanship. I I know Kathy already spoke up about that. Yeah. Um, unless there's anything else, I think. The grant money is allocated. I don't know the town as a whole has access to that information.
Hmm.
Though we, when we did get the grant, we did put out a PR. Like a.
Right.
Through JGB.
Yes.
Um, so it, I mean, it was, the information was put out there.
Yes.
Through and it was in the paper.
Yes, it was.
So, I'm wondering like here, where we're doing this, um. When we're saying, uh, where was the publicizes and promotes gifts, donations and grant monies. This is something I wanted to bring up as others. I didn't respond to this, but as I was talking about getting this grand gift. I just got. But the town got for us um to use for, yeah, for us to use. About um publicizing in like the newsletter about, you know, donations and someone gives. Or the the art thing, like the it was Joe, the donation that's coming.
Yeah.
You know, and then people like, oh, I could donate to the. Or trust funds. This was bought by trust funds. Have you seen the new one? We get the furniture. Have you seen the new library? Trust funds, you too can give your trust, yeah, I mean. Publicizing it in that newsletter, cause people do need the newsletter.
Yes.
And so, you know, any any of that or the, you know, grants or, you know. Um, the new sink, well, it's kind of late. The sink has been there for a while, but the furniture for you that we just purchased. You know?
But I think, you know, even, I don't know, the grant money. That sentence there about, um, I don't know that the town as a whole has access to the that information. I just think.
Hmm.
It's so hard to get information out.
And it is.
Go into the newspaper once. I mean, how many people are subscribing to, you know, right? The paper now, so. It it is like a real challenge to really.
Do it.
Announce it at the select board meeting and let people know. It it's a big challenge.
Oh, I will say, um. Uh, JGPR will also put those things on our Facebook page and.
Right.
They they've they've been hu- very helpful with. Keeping the modernization part as well as the it goes in the paper part, so.
Right.
That's.
But I remember LSTA grants that I got, we were supposed to say before every program that this came from.
Yes.
Remember that.
And it has to go on every announcement of every program.
Yeah.
Literature you put out, it had to have the logo.
Yes, and to be fair.
You know, that was like.
The MCC, yes. Yeah, I know. I think maybe. I think some of the programs did start out this way from the past year. There was just a lot of.
Yeah, there was.
Stuff going on and.
Exactly.
Right.
Mind slippage, moving forward, yes, and and I know MCC absolutely has that stipulation, so. Um, that was done with Jenny the juggler and Cornell totally.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, I know, and it's it's a big thing to keep track of it all.
Yeah. Um.
Goals.
Goals, okay. Um, I just commented that there was a reason behind digital Commonwealth taking the while, but where that's in the process now. Um, it's mainly just because we weren't ready for digitization.
And you have to be ready for it by the time you apply for it.
But it boils down to research. Or nothing.
Yeah, I mean, I can always. Link to it on our website as well, and all the resources are still there and even when we're not. Even if we were at members, so I actually have a. An idea forming to replace a link with the digital Commonwealth link, um, that has just popped into my head. Um, as things do. Um.
May I say that the the comment about the Gupta collection not moving head fast enough. Um, step up and volunteer because we're short of help and the person who's working on it. Does many other things for the library and is an unbenefited position of eighteen and a half hours. So to be able to squeeze a few hours in to do that, if you know, if you think you can help, step up and volunteer.
Yep.
Well, the Gupta thing is. Uh, it was earlier in the report. Um. It was, it was, um. Yeah, it was a comment in here somewhere. Um. Is two community members are working on it and they, you know, Bill Newell. And, um. Yeah, and he has someone actually taking the notes for him as he go has gone through the boxes. However, both of them have been going through, you know, personal issues that. Um, have made it take some time and, um. There, but but we have a plan in place for, um. Access for when that happens. Also, my idea is. To hopefully take the primary sources from those, uh, marking where they were, but get those digitized.
Hmm.
Um.
Wonderful.
So. You know, obviously we need to mark where those are in there, but that would be part of our digitization. As, you know, as long as that's a a possibility, which actually.
Did you get a lot of volunteers to put the shelving together?
Uh, so. Evangeline volunteered herself and her husband, and she's she's been assembling our new blue chairs and the conversation tables. She loves it though, um.
Who is this?
Evangeline, our staff member. She she's very handy, um, loves doing that, so. Um, so the that's that's what I have thus far.
Yep.
Okay. Um, and I don't think it'll be too many shelves at once, though, so should be.
Did you put out a call to the Riordan group?
So.
To the group that are in charge of the Riordan room, the children's room?
Well, they're not, they're not gonna be shelves in there.
Right, but they may be willing to do some volunteer work.
Maybe.
Yeah.
I'm. I will definitely take that into consideration. Um.
We would not want the assembling furniture. I'm a crooked screwer. I always go in crooked.
Ready to wrap up?
Yeah, um, I mean, you've you've read the goals page. Those will be for the coming. Here.
Yes, they look really good.
Thank you. Um, and you know, to emphasize local history is always an ongoing goal. I just wanted to put two new ones. Yes. Does anybody have?
There's been a lot of progress made and I think. It feels really good.
Thank you.
Time is now, we sometimes get enough time.
Um, maybe if you wanna. Let's find it and.
I don't know, do we sign it?
Yes, it has Dr. Seco review or review. All nine, actually.
Well.
There's the attached this. I haven't.
And like when we sign Lawrence, we just.
Yeah, I'll put it in the green folder and as you all come in, um. I'll have you sign, so I can officially. Yeah, cause there's a typo on this and this last page, and I need to attach the goals as well, so.
Yeah, yeah, that was gonna.
But you're attaching your responses to.
Yeah, I'll put the comments or the goals and then the comments, um, whatever order they are in here.
Yeah.
I'll I'll do that and then I'll sign it and then it'll be waiting in the folder for everybody, the green folder. I'm just making sure everybody on the board knows, green folder. Okay.
And the sooner the better.
Yes, sooner the better. Do I? Keep that in my own personnel file? Do I give that to? I don't know if that was even. The whole thing was signed there.
Just keep the coffee and somebody asks, oh, here it is.
Okay.
Right.
Sounds good to me.
So it's asked for.
Okay.
Uh, last year we took up a collection for holiday gifts.
That was on my list.
Yeah, I would, I I I I I. I bought the money and got got the gift cards. I could, I would be glad to do it again this year.
Anything else from the trustees?
Yes, you had asked me, Bob, to bring up the idea of uh adding back public comment on our agenda. And I think it's really something we should do. We're supposed to be transparent and receptive to the public, and I think that. We need to put that on our agenda.
The town councils recommend against it?
Yeah.
Did they recommend?
I think. Recommended against it for that particular meeting where.
For that meeting, I think, I mean, the selectmen have it on their agenda. Um, a lot of other boards have it on their agenda. I. I think we really should, if somebody wants to come in and. I'm sorry, Darcy.
No, I just said up to you all, I'm.
Oh.
Good with either way.
I mean, certainly I would never turn anybody away that wanted to come in and make a public comment, whether it's on the agenda or not.
Right, I mean.
And it's important to remember the chair can control the amount of time.
So, I mean, I don't know if it needs to necessarily, it's an open meeting. So that is, anyone can attend. And we can, if we see someone that actually is on Zoom or is here.
Right.
We can invite them, you know, if there's any public comment, you have, you know, a minute, two minutes, whatever, like. We invited Brian Jamrose today. We didn't have him. You know what I'm saying? So.
I just think it, I just think it's a friendlier, more inclusive way to present the library.
It would just need to be an agenda item.
Just put it down there like the very beginning.
Yeah, or it could be, you know, comments from the comments from the trustees, comments from the public.
I think that's a good idea, Kathy. I I agree with you that, you know, if somebody is zooming in or something, you wanna make sure there's a. Place for them to say, you know, ask a question. Maybe they just wanna ask a question, you know?
Yeah, it could be anything.
Or somebody comes in here and is sitting through the whole meeting.
Right.
I would say at the very beginning of the meeting so that we could, you know, and then, like you said, the chair would have. I would say at the very beginning of the meeting so that we could, you know, and then, like you said, the chair would have the control over. You have, you know, two minutes, it's not.
Or three minutes, whatever.
All right.
I'm in favor of it, but I don't like this idea of leading in with telling someone they only have two minutes. As chair, it would be more inclined to respond to someone that was going on and on and on or. Misbehaving badly.
But remember what the lawyer said, once they start talking. You can't really stop them if you don't like what they're saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You give them a three minute opening, we don't have to respond to it. And public comment with the selectmen, they don't respond to public comment. They just, it, what's said is said, and they can take it on an agenda right and at a later meeting.
Yeah, the lawyer did say there should be that time limit stipulation.
You can even say five minutes if you want.
Other than a big controversy period, we used to ask for public comment and we never got any.
Still, it's nice to have it there. It shows.
It's not going to hurt. Maybe we'll get some people to attend the meetings.
I make a motion to add public comment to our agenda on a regular basis.
Okay, I said that.
Thank you.
Oh, we had to vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Me, yes.
Yeah.
Jane?
Yeah, I said, yep, yep, I'm sorry. And there's one other thing I have to correct myself on, and I'm sorry I didn't do it. Uh, when the the agenda, when the minutes were approved, I made a mistake. In the minutes, I had said Mary Ann Tibbetts, Gerard and Mary Ann Tibbetts. Her name is Mary Jane Tibbetts. So I'm sorry.
I and I caught that when I read them and I forgot about it again. All right.
That's because I'm younger than you, Laurel.
I make motion for the meeting to adjourn on that note, so.
All those in favor, by acclamation, yes.
Adjourning eight thirty-three since our note taker is.
Next meeting is December eleven.